Good morning, welcome to the Kansas City Kansas Community College Board of Trustees Meeting of October 13th, 2015. I would like to open the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance and ask Carolyn McCain to lead us in the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ask the Secretary for Roll Call, please.
Trustee Ash.
Here.
Trustee Drydenfall.
Here.
Trustee Daniels.
Trustee Flunder.
Here.
Trustee Maddox.
Here.
Trustee Rios.
Here.
Trustee Townsend.
Present. Okay, ask the motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move for approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
And move in second to approve the consent agenda, are there any questions? Ready for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Audience to patrons and petitioners, before we get started in this area, for those of you who wish to speak before the Board, there is a sign in sheet on this table over here to my left, and please sign in on that sheet, and we want to make sure that anyone who wishes to speak to the Board understands that this is an open forum, and the Board, this is designed so the Board of Directors can hear from members of the community and the public and members of the college on matters that are of their concern, both positive and negative regarding the college's programs and activities. This is not intended to permit criticism of individual employees of the college who may or may not even be present, who and may not be prepared to respond in any kind of manner. This does not mean that the Board does not want to hear such criticism because the Board is committed to continual improvement of the college, but it is unfair to affect, to the affected employees for those criticisms to be voiced in public. Therefore, any criticism of individual employees of the college must be made in writing to the Chairman of the Board. I will then determine whether the criticism should be shared with other Board members or otherwise investigated, and will then respond to the correspondence in an appropriate manner, in a confidential manner. Language used during this open forum must be professional, concise, respectful to all members of the audience. Speakers may be asked by the Board members to elaborate or clarify comments so that the Board can better understand the issues. So these comments are not intended to engage the speaker in debate, so make sure that you're clear before you come before the Board to speak. So, is anyone wishing to speak to the Board after saying all that? Yes, sir. And, did you sign in?
Yes, I did.
Please state your name, sir.
While you were speaking, I went over and signed in, so I'm legal. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good to see your bright smiley faces again. As usual, I have something I want to present to you. This time it's going to seem more like an advertisement than it is a request. October the 24th, which is next Saturday.
Excuse me, sir.
Oh, Richard Mavy, 2035 Oakland.
You got to think about it.
Oh, yeah. Kansas City, Kansas.
I'm worried about you, Richard.
Sorry about that, as soon as you stopped me, I knew why. Okay, October 24th, the NAACP, Kansas City, Kansas NAACP, if you didn't know it, I'm the President of the NAACP, and El Central Incorporated will be hosting the first annual Harlem Book Fair Midwest here in Kansas City, Kansas. We have established a relationship with the Harlem Book Fair, which those who didn't know it, is a historical affair, this goes on in New York Harlem for the last almost 20 years, and they have agreed, due to my pleading, as you know that I do, to start holding one here in Kansas City, Kansas. I'm going to send these around first. Please take two, one green and one white one, that's just to let you know what's going on, I think it should be enough for all of you sitting there. And in the process, what I'm coming to you about is because I need to make sure, or try to at least get your support, help, and understanding that we need to have people to show up for this book fair. We're going to turn it into an opportunity not only for the education of our youth, especially in the black and brown communities, but also from a black and brown perspective. Our communities need to see black and brown leadership doing something that is acceptable and worthwhile to this entire city. That's what this event is going to be about. Hopefully, we'll be able to establish relationships between businesses here and businesses in Harlem. One we've already established through our Harlem contact, and it's with a book group called First Book, and because of that relationship, they have sent us 5,000 books to give away free to help promote this event. I'm going to send those around so you can see the caliber of books that we have, and what I'm going to do on your behalf is to donate at least a case of three or four of these books to your Head Start Program over here on ground. I have books like this Dora Dora that comes with the paint and the whole bit, and I felt like that would be quite appropriate for that particular operation that you're here. So take a look at them, see what we doing. There you go, sir. I'm not asking anybody for any money except the Sheriff, and that's between him and I. Everybody else gets by free on this trip, but we'd love to see your faces. I need to see your faces not only for the children in the community, I need to see your faces for the vendors, and if you know of any vendors, we'll take, we'll take your money up to the 24th, just have them get in contact with either myself or Irene, you got a number there that you can use, okay? Any questions before I sit? Thank you, I'm glad y'all have this forum because it gives me a chance, how you doing over there, Trustee Drydenfall? Yes, ma'am? Yes, sir?
No, I was just going to say, thank you, Mr. Mavy.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak to the Board? All right, moving along. Madam President, do you have any communications?
Yes, I do, Mr. Chair. The Sunderland Foundation and the person of Mrs. Nancy Thomas. Oh, this is the letter we received for Nancy Thomas that came to the college, and since I received it, and happened to open it, I'm going to share the information. It was exciting. We have received your request for a grant from this foundation for Kansas City Kansas Community College. The Board of this Foundation has approved a contribution of $60,000 for building relocation for the Fire Science Division. We are pleased to be able to support Kansas City Kansas Community College and wish you every success. We thought that was very exciting. And this is from Arlana Coleman, who is with the Women's Chamber. Dear Dr. Givens, I am writing to, on behalf of the 2015 Wyandotte County Back to School Fair Committee to say thank you. Because of your support, we have had another successful Wyandotte County Book Back to School Fair. We appreciate the use of Kansas City Kansas Community College to host this fair. Following other results of this year's fair, 5,000 backpacks with school supplies were provided, 4,000 age-appropriate books were provided, 176 students received sports physical exams, 65 students received 146 immunizations, 130 students received eye screenings with 31 referred, 200 parents enrolled students in free or reduced lunch, 63 exhibitors shared information on services for students and families, 236 volunteers supported the fair. Hot nutritious lunch was supplied for everyone who attended. We hope you will continue your support for the 2016 Back to School Fair. Please consider allowing us to host the fair at the Thomas R. Burke Technical Center next year. I am happy to respond to any questions, thank you, Arlana Coleman. And this past week, when there was the tragedy at the Oregon Community College, our police received many messages of thank you, we appreciate you, thank you for keeping us safe from faculty, staff, and from students. And so, I won't read those to you, but it was, it was several of those that came in, and I'd like to publicly thank the Chief and his force for the fine work they do in keeping us safe and training us.
Okay, I have a quest for approval of a resolution regarding consumption of alcoholic liquor at a celebration of mass with His Grace Archbishop Naumann on October 13th, 2015, which is today. This is the very same resolution that was passed at the March 15th, 2015 Special Board Meeting, but with a different mass celebration date. So I won't read the entire resolution because it has been passed, I just asked for...
Motion to approve the resolution.
That's exactly what I want.
It's been moved in second to approve the resolution, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. President's report.
First, I would like to remind the Board that our 4.0 Gala will be Saturday, October the 24th, so that's not this coming Saturday of this week, but the following week, and we'd like to make sure you get your reservation in. The cost is $100 per person for an individual ticket. It's at Lake Cuvera, and the reception starts at 5:30, the silent auction closes at 6:45, dinner is at 7, and the program begins at 8. This is a fundraiser for our students, for our scholarships, and for those of you who are available to attend, we'd love to have you. We'd love to have standing room only and bring in more tables, so please plan to attend. If you are familiar with the old Washburn Barn?
Washburn.
Washburn Building. That has been an eyesore for us for a long, see, for a long time, for those of us who watched the tech center rise up out of the ground and become a wonderful eye healing for the folks in this, in this area, but at 6565 State Avenue. If you haven't driven by there lately, drive by and see how beautiful it is. It perfectly matches the Dr. Thomas R. Burke Technical Education Center painting and also the roof, so we've redone the outside so that it's beautiful. The $60,000 that we just, that I just read the letter for you, the money will be used to refurbish that building so that we can reload our fire science program. That is where they will be located. So, I took a tour through it. It's kind of scary in there now, but we're looking forward to it being refurbished, and you need to know that our people who work at the college and the programs located in the tech building will be the ones who will refurbish that building, and they will only outsource those things that they cannot do. So we're really excited about that, we're going to save some money on that. The photos are on our website if you want to see how it looks now, and you don't have time to drive by there. We have two faculty members here with us today, and I'd like for them to stand and come forward, Darren Elliott and Jim Mayer. These two highly, very experienced faculty members were honored this month, recently, and Darren Elliott was awarded with Coach of the Year for Parliamentary Debate, and he was also awarded the Distinction of the 2014-15 Educator of the Year Collegiate Level from the Kansas Speech Communication Association. Would you like to speak?
What's that?
Would you like to have words?
Just thank you, I appreciate the recognition. The Speech Communication Award for the collegiate level was a great honor, but especially the Parliamentary Coach of the Year, this was primarily in recognition for the job that our college did in hosting the National Parliamentary Tournament. Us winning that, of course, was icing on the cake, but the job that we did certainly wasn't just me, and the recognition belongs to everybody at the college. There were so many people that put in the time and the effort to make that tournament a success, from all of the support from the Board of Trustees, the President, all of the Vice Presidents, the financial side of the House, the buildings and grounds, maintenance, the IT people, the media services people, everybody, I don't want to leave anybody out, but virtually everyone on campus played an excellent role in that tournament being a success, and so that award really, in my opinion, belongs to the entire campus. So thank you again for supporting the program and for supporting it so people from around the country want to come in and be here and see our campus, and so certainly appreciate it and thank you for the recognition. Thank you.
Thank you. And the second one, the second instructor to receive an award was an honorary degree from the London College of Music. This award is intended to provide official recognition of individuals who have made a significant contribution to their field. Jim Mayer was selected based on his dedication to jazz music education and promotion of that art form. Would you like to have words?
Thank you, the recognition is wonderful, and when you love what you do, any accolades that come along the way are chocolate sauce, so I'm very grateful, thank you.
Thank you. Last week, we hosted the Kansas State Leadership Institute, and that was, I proudly say, it was founded by the 19 Community College Presidents in the state of Kansas. Jackie Vietti, who is the President Emeritus of Butler Community College, and now she is the interim President at Emporia State University, she's the person who leads the group. She said that because we set the bar so high, they want to come back again next year, they're only supposed to visit different campuses, they're not supposed to come back to the same campus again, but they had such a good time, and we took them out to eat, we really had a good time. They want to come back here again next year, so we will host them against, next year. But the thought that we don't have succession planning, many of the colleges don't have succession planning, and the Presidents and many of the leadership, of the chief leadership positions, and the faculty and the staff are all retiring, and many of these colleges don't have a plan in place to replace those individuals. So we started the Leadership Institute so that we could make sure that there are people available and interested. Since this is the first year, each college could only have one person, and the way we did it was the college recommended, the President recommended the person, there was no process to it, because we were late getting started and we just had to do it, so we went ahead and do it, so Shirley Walker is the person, Dr. Walker is the person from, I don't see her this morning.
She's back there.
She's back. Okay, there she is. She's, she's the one person from Kansas City Kansas Community College who's attending, and she's doing a fantastic job, got real good reports from her, from her and instructors in the, in the group. We also hosted the Innovation Summit, how many people went over for the Innovation Summit? Yeah, it was a good crowd, it was exciting to watch all of the students and all of the community members and the people who did their presentations or their pitches, and it was very interesting in watching the winners and the runner-ups and the things that they are creating. Alicia Hooks was, is not here today because she's in Houston attending the National Association for Entrepreneurial Edu, whatever, but she's, she's not here today, but she's doing a fantastic job, and it was a great success. And in front of you, you have paperwork that, that talks about making the most of your Our interns, for the first time this year, have a, a training program that was designed to be used college-wide for our interns, and part of that group's responsibility is once a month to attend a lunch that is, that is sponsored by a CEO, and this month, they were at KCKCC, they were here at the college in our boardroom, and they got to ask questions about leadership and about the college, and to tell us who they were, who they are, and what they're doing, and how they appreciate the opportunity. Now, it was very exciting to have the students talk about their internships, and we're looking for internships that pay, because students need money, and we are hoping, our plan is to make an internship available to all students who have 30 units or more, who are, are looking for internships, and who are willing to take on that responsibility. So that's one of the things we're very excited about. George Mayfield opened in our art gallery, and he is a student from KCKCC, you should go down and see his work. They're open at specific times of the day, I think it's something like 2 to 4 daily, but you can find it on the website, I'll call my office, I have the information there, or check it, and, and you can find out what time they open, but it's really worth taking the time to go and see. And all of the things that I mentioned to you are just affirmation that Kansas City Kansas Community, are just still the most progressive, forward-thinking, forward-looking, forward-moving entrepreneurial community college in the entire state of Kansas and beyond. So thank you, that's my report.
Move approval of the President's report. Second. Move in second to approve the President's report, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Madam.
One more presentation.
Oh, one more President. Yeah, I, I didn't know if, if Dr. Vitale was doing it or I was doing it.
Which one?
We have students available, students who are...
Naishan, yeah.
Okay.
They'll, they'll do it, yeah.
This is under the Vice President's report.
Good morning, normally Naishan Thomas would be addressing the group, but I'm excited to introduce some of our new officers for our Student Senate, and Joe Lenway, who is the Vice President for our Student Senate, he also happens to be the center on the basketball team and goes by Big Joe, so if you would like to call him Big Joe, it's okay with him, and I'm going to turn it over to him now, and he will tell you about some activities that are going on, and also I'll ask the other individuals that are here that are on the exec board for Student Senate to introduce themselves.
Hi, my name's Cheyenne Lake, I am the tournament coordinator, and I'm a part of the women's soccer team.
Hi, my name's Jade Davila, I'm secretary and I'm also a part of the women's soccer team.
I'm Joe Lenway, established that. We had a, we had a movie night on October 8th at 7:30, we had it pretty well around a group that came, 25 people, and our next college age movie night is October 22nd at 4, 4 to 6, and it'll provide activities for students between classes. We have Student Senate meeting October 14th in the Lower Jewel at 2:15, and October 28th, we'd like to invite our trustees to join us. Student Senate will be attending the National Association of Campus Activities, October 15th through the 18th in Tulsa, Oklahoma. We have a free kids' Halloween party on Friday, October 30th, from 5:30 to 7:30, a lot of games, food, and a pumpkin patch, and a lot more stuff. Our college age costume contest is Friday, October 30th at 8:00 to 9:30, and we have a women's home soccer game, it's breast cancer awareness, today at 5:30, and the men's game's at 8 o'clock. This Wednesday, we have a volleyball Dig Pink game for also breast cancer awareness, October 14th at 6:30, and women's basketball's first game is October 30th at 5, and men's basketball is October 31st at 4, and that's all I have.
Any questions of the students on the Board?
I don't have any questions, but I do want to comment, I have attended the first two Student Senate meetings, and I just want to commend you on the professional manner in which you have started out. I'm very impressed with the attendance, with the organization's activities, really got them going this year, and it's exciting, and I'm hoping also that the athletic department is very well represented in Student Senate, so I think that connection is going to be proved very valuable to our overall campus, campus atmosphere, and getting that school spirit going, as, you know, we not only want to have well-educated individuals, but community-minded, and that community is within these, within the campus, the community, and also the greater community, and so I really do appreciate all the efforts that I've witnessed to this point, and hope that that continues. Thank you.
You know, Mr. Chair, one of my former seventh grade basketball students in that group, and it's not the one you might think it is, all right, so, very proud of her. Oh, okay. Okay, Dr. Vitale?
Okay, you have my report, I'd be glad to answer any questions, I just wanted to, you know, make a note of the Kansas Core Outcomes Meeting that took place in September at Johnsons County Community College. The state had started several years ago the process of bringing faculty from the state universities and the community colleges together to discuss specific courses, and to agree on common learning outcomes, and then align the courses up so that they would transfer smoothly between institutions. You can go to the K-Bor website and see a matrix of the courses they've built. To date, there are 56 approved courses for statewide system transfer, the number's going to grow, it's growing smaller each year because they've gone through the, the more common courses that all the institutions offer, now we're getting down to those where not necessarily every community college will offer a course in a particular area, but we're still looking at those and still continuing to build out that, that transfer course list, so it's, it's very important to our students as it ensures that they won't lose credit when they leave one institution and transfer to another. Our Emergency Medical Technician Paramedic Program was reaccredited in September, on September 18th, the Commission on Accreditation of Allied Health Education Programs voted to award continuing reaccreditation to those programs, and they will have their next -- And they will have their next, uh, evaluation, uh, by 2020. So we're proud of that, uh, as well. Also, uh, I wanted to make sure that everyone was aware that October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And in support of that, Phi Theta Kappa and our bookstore will be celebrating Pink Ribbon Day tomorrow in the bookstore from 10 to 2 PM. They'll have cupcakes, cookies, lemonade and raffles, pink lemonade, by the way, to support that. So tomorrow, wear pink to support, uh, Breast Cancer Awareness Day. If there are any questions on my report, I'd be glad to answer those questions at this time.
I just had a couple of comments that, uh, kind of some congratulations. I noticed that the mandatory advising look like gets really paying off. I saw dramatic increase in that. And I also, uh, wanted to congratulate you on the citizenship initiative and encouraging, uh, our students and faculty to vote. I think that's a really important thing and I know that the college does voter registration and, and we've got a really important election coming up and this is perfect timing. So I wanted to congratulate you on that. Uh, the other thing that I noticed was that, you know, as I've talked to, to some of the, the faculty about the concerns on completion rates, because we've been so successful at the tech center, that companies sometimes come in and recruit before the students have actually been able to complete their certification, can earn more money. And I noticed that at least one of the companies has agreed, uh, to continue working with the students and, and paying them, but letting them complete. So those are things that I've, I've noticed and been concerned about and I just wanted to congratulate you all on those accomplishments, along with a lot of others. So thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'd like to tag on to that because as you'll recall, out in Cloud County, last month, we heard a presentation from Dr. Kay McClinney regarding, uh, student engagement and student success. And one of the key components was that, was the mandatory advising. I think we started by referring to it as intrusive advising, uh, there, but, uh, there is a, there is a ton of research, um, linking the effectiveness of student completion on, um, that, you know, that component. So I noticed that in your report as well. And I think we're, I think it affirms that, that we here at, at Kansas City, Kansas Community College are on the right track in terms of linking, you know, student engagement to student success.
Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Ash, for reminding us that, that we need to set a special board meeting so that the rest of the trustees have an opportunity to view that video. So, um, we'll be working with the president to set up, set up a special meeting. Okay.
Move for acceptance of the vice president's report.
Second.
Moving the second to accept the vice president's report. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. Chief Financial Officer, Dr. Lindell.
Thank you. I just wanted to let you know, we are finishing up the audit with Novak Berks and they will be here next month to present, uh, the audit to the board. Uh, we're ahead of schedule and, and things are moving along well. Just wanted to certainly compliment our team because they have put together all the financials and, and made it, uh, I think, very transparent as we would expect it to be and very professional and, again, ahead of schedule. So we're delighted to see that. In addition to that, we had last week, uh, the, um, update of the campus master plan and that had not been updated since 2009. We had the first draft of that and that went to the, the Finance Committee of the Board. They're going to make some adjustments to that after feedback from, um, our team and bring that back to the board as well, so that we can begin to look at what the next three to five years will look like on our campus for capital, uh, planning. And so those are both, uh, to come next month. And, um, in addition to that, I'd just like to say for marketing aspect, we do have, um, advertisement this weekend if you're out at the racetrack. And so want to certainly compliment, uh, Cliff Smith and, and the entire team working together to put together information on our academic programs so that we are front row center, uh, to reach some individuals there. And it will be the first time we've been able to, um, to attend that event and advertise at that event. So if you're there, be sure and stop by the KCKCC, um, venue. And, uh, last but not least, I do have the, um, rolling forecast that's at each of your, your places. We did finalize that and presented to the Finance Committee of the Board last Thursday evening. It's a new report closely mirroring the, um, audit that you received, the audited financials. The first column has the fiscal year budget that you all approved. Second column, what we've actually spent the first quarter of this year, and we'll be bringing this back each quarter that we meet, and then our rolling forecast. So our team gets together to look at, are we ahead of schedule, behind schedule? Do we need to make adjustments? So that those are made on a quarterly basis and not reported at the end of the year. And then in addition to that, we have year-over-year comparison that's also on that sheet. And so, uh, to the far, uh, column, you'll see the variance and then, uh, certainly the, um, the rationale for each of those. And so, um, we will bring that forward every quarter for your review.
If I may, uh, just add, trustees, of course, this is kind of early in the, uh, term, but, uh, the rolling forecast, I think, is the most important, uh, thing for us to keep an eye on. And as you will see, that, uh, we are projecting to only have $208,000, um, at the end of the academic, uh, term. And, uh, I would caution that that is dangerously low. Typically, uh, the goal of, um, of this board administration, certainly through Finance Committee, has been something closer to a million, uh, because, uh, it's kind of our insurance policy. Uh, if something catastrophic were to happen, you have to have some funds, uh, available. And, uh, so I would just encourage, because it is, uh, uh, early, so I don't want to put out a, uh, you know, all kinds of, uh, flags out there, but at this juncture, uh, it would appear that we are going to have a, a rather low, uh, um, end-of-term, uh, financial position. And this is with, uh, the fee and tuition increase, uh, that we, um, initiated. So had we not done that, uh, just so you know through Finance Committee, it, we would be somewhere about a half million in the red. So, uh, I think it was wise. I know it was somewhat painful, uh, for, uh, students, uh, have to bear, uh, further costs, uh, but I really do appreciate our financial aid and, uh, finance people who work with our students, uh, to, uh, do their very best. Uh, I know that, uh, our foundation also, uh, in giving out scholarships and trying to meet the needs, uh, of our students. But, uh, you know, at some point, we are, are really going to have to, uh, have an earlier budget, uh, session and, and really focus in on, uh, having quality, um, facilities and resources to better enable our students to be successful and yet be good stewards of the financial house, um, here at the college. So, uh, please know that the committee is going to be looking at these numbers very, very carefully, uh, moving forward and, of course, sharing this, uh, data with you as, as we move forward. And, uh, hopefully, uh, we'll be able to, um, continue. The deans, I want to give kudos to the deans that, uh, have done a good job in the last two years in, uh, having savings, uh, through their departments. But we're probably going to have to ask for that again. So, uh, please, uh, be cognizant of that. Thank you.
So to be clear, Susan, does the 2008-860 represent the totality of our reserve funds?
The contingency is listed on the line before that. So yes, and you'll see the contingency was raised, uh, by the amount, uh, that would have been paid out for the lease. So that was moved from the lease line item down to the contingency. And so we will, again, it's very early in the year at a quarter and we'll be bringing this forward and watching it very carefully.
Thank you. Also want to say, this is an excellent report and, uh, especially with the forecasting. It really gives the, uh, the board some frame of reference and, and there are no surprises. So thank you very much.
Circle. Thank you. Great team.
Need a motion to accept the Chief Financial Officer's report?
Shall move.
Been moved the second to accept the Chief Financial Officer's report. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. Finance.
I would just move approval of the bills. They are listed. They are in the amount of, um, um, $4,209,182. Of that included is the $204,000, 505 Visa bill. We do have, um, funds, of course, to pay those bills, so we'd move, uh, to have them paid.
Move to pay the bills.
Been moved the second to pay the bills. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. Anything else?
That's all. Thank you.
That's it. Reports from committees. Any committee reports? We have, uh, on the agenda.
Well, wait a minute. Maybe I can think of something.
Maybe, maybe we have a plane to catch. Well, you know, we mentioned Cloud County, the quarterly meeting, so in Wendell's right, we would like to schedule a special so that you all, it was an outstanding presentation by Dr. McClinney and, you know, if there's, Dr. Gibbons, if anyone else from your staff, you know, faculty feels appropriate to be interested in that one. It was an outstanding presentation. We need to do that. And, um, Chairman Maddox, Trustee Rios and I will be leaving today for the annual ACCT Conference, Congress, National Congress, uh, which starts this evening, tomorrow, um, through Saturday. We'll be back Saturday. So that's some kind of report next month when we get back from that. And a little addition to that, I'll be serving on a panel, uh, to, uh, present, um, uh, the board chair and president relationship and all that works. And we should note that, um, Trustee Jerry Cook from Johnsons County Community College is running for a national board position. So we'll be campaigning, if you will, uh, on his behalf. I think it would be excellent if we could get, uh, Dr. Cook elected onto that board, you know, representing Midwest here. That'd be, that'd be great. Yeah. All right. Thank you, Trustee Ash. We have on the agenda executive session, but I understand there's no need for that today. Is that correct? Okay, we'll move along to miscellaneous, you know, any miscellaneous items, sort of catch-all. Uh, it's probably the same as unfinished business. Do we have any unfinished business? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Shall move.
Moving the second to adjourn. Meeting adjourned.